Are you ready?
Sorry.
All right. It is 7:04 to hereby call the January Board Meeting of the Village Chibley Board of Trustees to Order. Please rise from the Pledge of Legions. We'll use the flag under that. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Welcome to the first meeting of 2014. Before we get into the regular business, I have a net chain of motions to suspend the rules to allow the public to address the board on agenda items only. Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Dave, the only thing on the agenda are schedules for the courts and the village. The only thing on the agenda are the village court schedule and the village... So, you can chat on this at the end if you want. Is there a motion to return to regular business? Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Moving on to a Clerk's Report. Clerk Roth.
We sold 627 garden tags, completed two payrolls, continue to collect on the latest order in the sewer building, and the office will be closed until 24:00.
That's it. Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the minutes. There are two in your packet. One is for a special board meeting held December 23rd. Those minutes are in your book. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted. Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. The next packet of minutes is from December 18th. That is our regular board meeting minutes. You've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion's been made by Trustee Israedi. It's seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed. Motion carries. Moving on to a Treasurer's Report. Out of this month, $27,522.82 is being paid out of the general fund. Out of the water fund, $5,130.22 is being paid. Out of the sewer fund, $1,883.80 is being paid. Gives us a grand total of $34,536.84. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report. Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed. Motion carries. You've had an opportunity to review the vouchers for this month. Is there a motion to approve payment of the bills? Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider and whispered seconded by Trustee Israedi. Is there a second? I mean, all in favor? All in favor? Motion carries. Trustee Israedi has own a report.
Yes, I did have a chance to speak with Steve Cole today for this week, and we are working together maybe with him and Fennel to start getting ready for recording. He always provides a listing of the building permits that he's issued and the complaints that he's followed up on. This time, he closed out two building permits and a third one for a shed and a fence, and the complaint that he responded to was at 33 Bradley where a couple of neighbors noticed that a dear fence had been corrupted, which was outstanding as his only friend fence had since. He let that owner know that they should appear before the planning board to get them to get a fence permit and then go to the planning board to see what constraints.
Okay. And I think one of the things that we talked about is reaching out to our CEOs with what we would like to see enforced and sort of what our top three issues that we had.
And I got a chance to speak with Sue Crim. She suggested that we go over the inter municipal management agreement and see if there were some teeth that we wanted to be able to get, so nobody found one.
To revise?
Well, I haven't looked at it, so I don't know if it's a failure to enforce it or if it needs to have more minutes.
Okay. Oh, good. You have a copy of that, right? The IMF.
Yeah, I mentioned that copy too.
Yeah. If anybody needs it, I have a copy too. I can forward it to the rest of the board. If you don't have a copy, you can make sure.
But in light of the issues that have been raised or that the experience has been nice, it seems like a good time to look it over again.
Agreed.
So in particular, the attachment is the scope that really is the focus of specifics on any individual agreement. They're all sort of generic in terms of how the IMF works, but attachment, the scope is really what we probably want to focus on.
Yeah.
To make sure that you give them a permit about what that scope should be.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Legislature Mickey Struinsky is here tonight for her first official meeting as our county legislator representing the town of Red Hook and the two villages. We just had a very nice meeting. I think it's going to be a regular meeting between the two of us. So, first of all, congratulations. Welcome to the board. And at this point, I return the floor over to Legislature.
Well, I'm on about eight minutes on this time prior to this meeting and got me up to speed a lot of the issues that Tivoli's dealing with right now. I'm sorry that you didn't get the community development log grant for the water use project, but hopefully doing forward whatever it is that you're going to apply for in the future that I can help advocate for Tivoli on the cap.
Appreciate it.
I've got lots to learn with the legislature, even though I've been going down there for the last two years, but I want you all to know that, you know, I am accessible. Once I get my business cards, I'll make sure that you're trying to be past that. If there are any issues that are related to the county and Tivoli's relationship, please don't hesitate, contact me. I did get appointed to the Health and Human Services Committee and the Government Administration Services down at the county, and I'm looking forward to, you know, reporting back on what I'm learning down there in the cap. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
Good luck down there. Seriously.
Get our emails.
I'll continue sending out emails of, you know, all kinds of issues related to events and lost dogs and water, you know, problems, so, but thank you.
No, it's seriously.
We're working with them.
Likewise. Seriously, good luck down there, and thank you. We have a meeting, a joint meeting coming up next week with water, wastewater.
Yeah, just water, wastewater.
Thank you for including me in on that.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mickey.
Thank you.
I declared a state of emergency for the village of Tivoli last week. The village unfortunately had three water main breaks and/or leaks in a period of four days. The last one that we had was last Tuesday night when the temperature was a balmy seven degrees and it occurred about eight o'clock at night. And having three breaks in four days is a huge concern to me and to the board, to Superintendent Simmons, our legislator, obviously is concerned about it as well. But before I get into that, I want to thank our DPW for the work that they did Friday, Sunday, and on Tuesday to repair those leaks and those breaks. Seven degrees with running water in the dark of night is no easy task, and my hats off, literally my hats were off to those guys as they came out with no hats that night. But my sincere thanks to Jim Simmons and Cody Thayer and Paul Butler for their work to repair those leaks. We had a presentation last month from the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to see what resources we can tap into to assist us here in the village with regards to our aging water system. It's no doubt and no secret that our system is aging every single day. This main line was put out in 1938, and we're seeing cracks, we're seeing leaks, and it needs to be rectified. And my thanks to Richard Barclay, who's the Executive Director of the Water and Wastewater Authority, for coming in and presenting to us. The authority's going to come in and do a review of our current system, and talk to Jim Simmons, our laborers, to look at our billing system, they're going to look at our facility, to see how they can assist us, what resources we might be able to share with them, what they can do to try to help us. So I'm looking forward to that. My thanks to Legislature Struinsky for setting up that meeting next week while I went up to sit down and talk about that. The first break that we had, unfortunately, our backup was not working. It being the holiday season, not a lot of places were open. My thanks to Mayor Blundell from the Ville Direct for allowing us to borrow his backup for that and allowing us to keep it for a couple of days. Didn't know we would need it for so many days, but unfortunately we did. But it worked out well. Trustee Israedi raised a question, you know, what was the cost of those taxpayers during those breaks? It was minimal. It was... We had to pay the overtime is really what it came down to because our guys were out at eight o'clock at night until one o'clock in the morning, so it came down to paying the overtime. The equipment that we had, the resources that we had were pretty much in-house. We apologize for any interference that it caused when we had to shut the water lines off. We apologize about any inconvenience that the ice that formed along Broadway, we apologize about that. We tried to get it out as fast as we could, the word. I did declare a state of emergency and then issued an executive order that allowed me to bypass our procurement policy and allow us to purchase any materials without having to get the bids. Fortunately, we did not have to make any major purchases, but we did shut water off, I believe, on two separate occasions, so I apologize for the inconvenience that that caused and appreciate the cooperation and the understanding. That is all I had in terms of announcements. There are two items that we need to approve tonight in terms of the board's approval. One is the holiday schedule for the 2014 operating year. This is standard housekeeping that we need to do every year. Those schedules are in your binders, and it's no different than any other municipality or what we've done previously. So at this point, is there a motion to approve the holiday schedule in 2014? Motion's been made by Trustee Israedi and seconded by Trustee Schneider, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Similarly, we need to approve a court schedule for 2014 as well. Again, this is a housekeeping issue. Is there a motion to approve that schedule? Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Did I talk about it in the workshop or here, but our...
So the court tapes are basically over two weeks.
Yes. There's a couple of exceptions in there. Yeah, March 17th. Thyzea Crop Elevator Company has been given the go-ahead to begin the repairs for the elevator. The elevator's been down since February, as you know. Our hope is to be back home as soon as we possibly can. Thyzea Crop has to purchase some materials, they have to coordinate with our village engineer and our DPW super, but we hope to get a start date, hopefully this week actually, of when we'll be able to start that. They've told us 100 hours of labor, so, well, probably not February, we're probably looking at March, but our hope is to be back over there as soon as we possibly can. But I want to thank the members of the American Legion and the firehouse for allowing us to either be here or at the firehouse to hold our meetings. I want to thank Bonnie Carrado, who's been very patient while we have not had an elevator, and of course, my staff, who have had to lug everything over here for the zoning board meetings and as well as these meetings, so my thanks to my staff. The next regular board meeting will be February 19th at seven o'clock, probably here at the American Legion. There'll be a workshop prior, and February 12th, there will be a workshop here, which is a regular workshop. At this point, I turn it over to committee reports. Deputy Mayor, Griffin.
Thank you. I'll start with the water report for the month of December. The ballot was off. McKnight, number one, pumped out 260,000 gallons. Two PW is on about half the month, put out 145,000 gallons. Five PW was off the month of December. Four PE and 10 PE were on all month, 663,000 gallons, and the Woodmark wells were also running the whole month of December for 729,000 gallons. We've spoken a bit about the water main breaks. Obviously, those will show up on my report next month, so we can relive that trauma. But, yeah, I mean, those guys, it's just amazing, you know, it is their job to do that, but they get out in such adverse conditions and do the job, and they don't gripe very much, so we really have to appreciate, appreciate what a good job they do. And also, the water systems operation report was clear with no violations. And the Tivoli Community Garden, there's still a couple of weeks to put your name in to possibly get a plot, so the deadline is February 1st. You can send an email to tivoli community garden at gmail dot com expressing your interest in a plot. There are 20 plots over on Pine Street. They're eight by 12 feet. It's restricted to Tivoli residents, and if we end up with more interested parties than we have plots, we'll organize a lottery. We haven't had to do that the first two seasons, but I secretly hope we do get to that problem because it would be great to have that level of interest. And again, we recommend you can partner with someone, some folks undertake an eight by 12 feet and find out it's a bit of work. It's kind of more fun to go over there with a buddy, and as I said, they can do your watering, so you can go on vacation. So again, tivoli community garden at gmail dot com, and the deadline is February 1st.
And do you still have hopes of raised beds over there?
Yes. So this will be our third season. The first season, the fees, important thing to mention, $30 for a plot. So another reason to share a plot, because then you're only talking 15. The fees from the first year went to constructing the fence. Last year's fees, we basically have held on to, and combining with the upcoming season's fees, we're going to have a substantial amount of money, and the hope is to create raised beds for the entire garden. It helps, it helps be clear about what's your plot and what's the path, which helps me know who to yell at when they're not weeding. And also, you know, we tried to make the garden as big as we could. It's a little low and soggy in the back row, as some gardeners will tell you, so this will help with that, with the drainage and make sure everyone's got a nice dry place to work, so.
It makes the soil easier to work. It's great innovation.
And you don't need to be a property owner, you can rent.
Yeah, you can rent. You know, again, we haven't had a deluge of interest, but, you know, if you've got two acres at home and you can have a garden at home, it might be nice to let some folks who don't have a garden, I know, over at the condominiums, for example, or any of the people who rent an apartment, this gives them an opportunity to do some gardening.
Great.
Thank you.
The library has a plant exchange, don't they?
Yes.
Usually, it's in late May. It's a good place to get the plants to put in the garden. It's one of those win-win things. So if you want to participate in that, another good idea.
Trustee Israedi?
Basically, I haven't talked to Tom and Chrissy, but the low sat materials are being created for the fire department. This is where the fire department looks over the number of meetings people have attended, the offices that they have, and the number of fire and rescue events that they've gone to to give them points to receive the $500 of service reward that they have in there. Once we get that listing, the board gets to looking over, and we send it back to the fire department, and they post it for 30 days, and then we notify our administrative that who's to receive the $500. So that process begins every year about this time. In addition to that, we've been watching the investment returns, the Red Lake candidate who manages the pot of money that's already been earned because the earnings are not distributed until the fire person reaches 65. In the meantime, we're hoping to earn about 6% a year. We had some very good years this last year, which was a year when the interest rates rose modestly off of very low levels. The returns were not as good, but the average for the five years of the program is still pretty strong, and we're monitoring the RFPs and the regular investment report. They're really trying to do the best for this program. Planning and zoning has had a little bit of a respite this last two months. We haven't had any meetings, and the zoning review committee has basically completed the work that they were to do on the greenway grant, and Chris Shaw and I are looking at a few less than a minute things, but we're going to send them over to Chris Shaw to take half of her guess and estimate on the cost of converting this into local law, at which point it will be presented in a public hearing, so people will have a chance to comment on it. And we've talked in this, I've talked to you a little bit about the parking, which we worked really hard on, but we also restated the conditions for home occupation, and Brian and I had a chance to talk to some people on the other end of that whose neighbors have a home occupation, so that would be something that you, that people may want to kind of take a look at. We, at least I believe, and this owner review committee believes that in this D and H, you have to accommodate home occupations. You have a lot of people working from home, some of whom have office jobs, and some of whom have jobs that require some equipment, so we tried to define those in a way that would not detract from the residential character of the neighborhoods in which they reside. But those are kind of gray areas, and so we really need the public to take a look at these new regulations and give us some feedback. The fire department is getting ready to work on their new budget, and they are also trying to finish up some medical programs and other transactions. They had the sense that we had put a hold on them for a while, but that has lifted...
I talked to them. Yeah, I talked to them last week. Trustee Bruno?
I did want to say a personal thank you to the DPW speaking with Jim at different times, and I had said to him, I said, "Wow, you had quite a week." And he just looked and said, "Yes, we did." And I could just sort of see it on his face, but, you know, a shout-out from my hat off to them because it was brutal. It was cold. It was awful. So one, a few things that I would talk about is the last event was Winterfest. Even with the delay for the week and the snow, we were able to pull on the...
I love that weather, Captain Windy.
I know. You know?
Only in Tivoli.
Right?
Only in Tivoli.
Only in Tivoli. You've got Santa, you've got a wedding, you've got a horse and a bride. But it did all work. Everyone was, you know...
And Craft Festival was actually kind of fun and a counterparty to the Winterfest.
You know, it did work, and I think everyone appreciated what everyone else was doing, so they, it all worked together, but it was terrific. I'd like to thank the sponsors, Who Work Morris Associates, Marty Clark, Williams Lumber, Santa Fe, Broadway Pizza, Central Hudson, Red Hook, Anford, and Stock and Chuck in Red Hook. And some additional thank yous would be to, again, to the DPW, they did help out quite a bit. Typically, fire department, we recognize the firehouse, and some of the guys even came in to help clean up the kitchen, which was fantastic at the end of that day. A thank you to Tom Hanson, who brings down those beautiful black berets around us. And thanks to our village clerk and deputy clerk, Linda Ginnell and Clara Rock, Emily Mangeri, and also to my fellow board members. Thank you to all of you for helping out. The Craft Fair was, went well. So many people had said that the participants were very pleased with the people and what they were able to sell. So the fair went well, the day went well, and now we just move on to Kachaa, which was a great party. One other, which you mentioned earlier, was this morning, I did meet with, along with Jim Simmons, our superintendent, met with the Director of Buildings and Grounds, Gerard Nestle, and two other gentlemen from Bard College. I did not get their last names, but Randy and Dan. We spoke about the skate ramp and the... Two gentlemen, along with Jim, will be staking out the area. We had discussion today of bringing in a backup, clearing out the area, bringing in fill, putting down fresh stone, transporting the ramp, and many thanks to Gerard, that Bard College is teaming up with us to really support the project. And he, along with Tom and Randy and Jim, will be discussing very soon the issue of transporting it up here. They'll be in a flatbed, and Gerard and Randy, along with some other gentlemen from Bard, will be coming up, stabilizing it, putting it back together, and securing it, so it basically would be in a shape like, up into the plans. Dan, he was going to look them over, which were very helpful to him about structural wise, just making it as strong as it can possibly be. So they'll clean it, they'll secure it, button up everything, and we'll get a sign to, just to let people know that we signed up for skating and appreciate where you are, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the park though for kids and pedestrians.
Is it wood? Is it metal? What's the...
It's, the frame is wood lumber, and the actual ramp is, it's a material called SkateLink. Its manufacturers have been very interesting. So, we're just in discussion with Jim, Gerard, and the other gentlemen, and we'll just keep moving. Weather right now is, as I'm aware, going to be nice week, so they will be staking it. And I think that's, well, again, near my usual, just to, as you mentioned, Susan, where they've got the library with the plants, we're nearly always got projects and things going on. And for the Legion and for the Masons, just keep an eye out for breakfast last Sunday of the month. And I believe in February, Legion is planning a roast beef there.
Trustee Schneider?
Okay. I wanted to... What's up?
You had an early morning.
I did have an early morning. I actually wanted to start with a thank you to any of all of the attendees for the Winterfest who did hang around after the festivities concluded to help support our local businesses. I know that we had reminded everyone that their activity here helps us locally, so I wanted to say thank you to anyone who did stop in and take advantage of the shops here.
After the last one, we had a lovely dinner.
Thank you, Trustee Israedi. Wonderful. As Mayor Cranna just reminded me, we did have a very early morning. We met the Shared Services Committee Study, excuse me, Shared Services Study Committee met this morning. The responses to the RFPs that were put out were received last week, distributed among the committee members, and we took it with to review them. We met again this morning to review them as a group, identified the potential positives and negatives aspects of each of the proposals that came in, and the candidates' interviews are slated to be scheduled by the end of January. The hope is that all the interviews will be wrapped up and the... Um, the hope is that all the interviews will be wrapped up, and the, um, candidate who best fits the scope of the needs will be chosen by the end of January. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, the committee's been meeting regularly. It's a good group of folks. It's a lot of, um, a lot of good ideas, and I can assure you that we're keeping Tivoli at the forefront, uh, to make sure that, you know, Tivoli doesn't lose its unique character. That's the main goal. We want to make sure that if we do this consolidating of our highway departments, that we, that Tivoli maintains, Tivoli, and that, uh, we don't lose anything. Legislature Struinsky never talked about this. We're not losing anything as much as we're regaining something from, uh, this program. That, that's our hope.
I was just about to say that the other committee members also recognize that desire from us as well, and you can feel it in all of the discussions that they are keeping now in their minds as well.
Yep.
Um, other than that, I do have the Tivoli Village Court, uh, Charge Volume Summary Report, um, for December 1st through December 31st of 2013. Uh, total charges received, uh, four, charges disposed, 29, and a total of $863 was collected and remitted to the State Controller.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, anyone wishing to address the board? Gentlemen in the back.
Wait, my turn? I've got about 10 things.
We have enough time.
See, uh, the snow plowing by the county, they come through this year, and they're laying it in the gutter, which, not on my sidewalk, thank God. But what that does is allows all the storm drains to back up, and none of the water can run away. It runs out into the road, which you'd know...
Jim, yeah.
Jim, is there something they can do about that?
I spoke to Jim Simmons, because my, um, my front yard was dug up, uh, pretty badly, uh, with the plow this year, too. I knew, I don't know if they're using a different plow or whatever the case may be, but that, uh, we are addressing that with, with the county. It was done completely different, yeah.
And from Broadway to the bridge, the blacktop is just crumbling.
Yeah.
Is that something that's gonna be worked on?
That, yeah, that...
Four corners, too?
Yeah, that road is obviously a county road, and the county will come up. The county was here not too long ago to do an assessment of the road. Um, so they will be coming up, uh, and this...
The river still retains water on the top, it's not drained, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, that stretch of Broadway is actually the, the worst roadbed in the village.
Yes.
And it's, you know, uh, you come into the village, that's the first thing you see. You leave the village, it's the last thing you see, and it's actually not our road. Um, so, yeah, I hope we can, uh, maybe work with the county and get some attention there.
And also, snow shoveling, you know, people aren't shoveling their walks. Is that gonna be enforced?
I believe it. They, I, what we normally do, um, you have 24 to 48 hours, I'm off topic. 24 hours. Normally, what we do is, uh, DPW normally goes around when they're patrolling, not patrolling. Well, when they're, DPW normally goes around through the village on the regular stops, and they make a note. The problem we had, uh, with these last couple storms is that when it was snow, we also had the water main breaks to deal with as well. Uh, but we normally send the notices out. You have 24 hours to do it. If you don't, we come out and shovel it. Um, I didn't have the manpower to send people out and shovel it this time.
Probably don't shovel anymore?
You should.
Probably.
Everybody should. Uh, we, we, we try to do the best that we can with those reinforcements. Timing was not on our side this time, but we do ask everybody to adhere to that.
The, there's a pile of garbage between Osaka and Murray's. It belongs to the tenants upstairs. It's sitting there, you can see it from the street. There's a, a waste manager can, it's flowing up over the top. There's probably four or five bags that are landing on the ground. It is disgusting back there. Who's responsible for that?
The landlord's responsible.
Landlord lives down south somewhere.
Well, that, then, if the landlord lives, I was just gonna say...
You give me her phone number, I'll call her up.
We'll call the property, uh, agent if we...
Now the kids are back. It's been sitting there since, uh, by break, the whole, the whole time.
What house is it? Because we'll follow up tomorrow.
Hmm?
What house is it?
It's at Murray's.
Oh, it's the, that building there?
The people who live upstairs.
Okay.
It's not Murray's garbage, it's the tenants'.
We'll take care of it. You'll thank them. Thank you. Well, and we, and we acknowledge, and I, I don't know if I talked about the board meeting or not, but Trustees Israti and the Deputy Mayor, uh, Trustee Israti and the Deputy Mayor are gonna be speaking with, uh, zoning. What we're gonna do is give them sort of our top three issues that we would like to see.
Is that a zoning...
Yeah, the garbage is not.
Garbage is not, but there's other issues that you've brought up before that relates to what we want to see with regards to, uh, with regards to zoning. But no, the garbage is, that's village.
Maybe two things, I don't know. Uh, 33 Broadway erected a fence down there sometime what...
We already talked about that.
Do they have a permit?
No, they've been issued a letter.
Why is it still there?
They've been, they've been, there's a process that you have to go through. They've been issued a letter, they've been asked to get a fence permit, they've been directed to go to the planning board to have that reviewed, uh, so that they can have direction on what kind of events that they're going to do. So, those are the steps that have been taken. Um, and when those steps have been taken, we should see the fence change. If the fence doesn't change, then they will be fine.
Well, if you're gonna put a fence up, first you didn't get, you go to Steve Cole.
Exactly. They've been, they've gotten a letter from the code enforcement officer informing them of that. So, the process track then has been initiated in the process.
That fence is six feet, probably.
And they've been notified that it's in...
Right, and we did what we were supposed to. They did not do what they were supposed to do. We did what we were supposed to do, and that's where we are now.
It's in, it's in process.
It's in the process. Yeah.
It's in the process of being removed?
It's in the process, it's in, it's in the regular process. No, I'm not gonna say it's, it's in process of being removed. They have a, there are steps that they have to take now to address the fact that they didn't, uh...
And we just, we, we don't go in there with a bulldozer to protect the fence. We issue a fine. But that's, that's how the law is to be enforced. And, and the fine hopefully becomes onerous enough that the property owner will remove the fence. That's, that's how the law tells us to do this.
Maybe something should be sent out, everybody to water, don't notify a number of stuff that's sort of affect zoning, maybe.
It doesn't happen.
It, it, the entire...
Because it seems like everybody's doing what they want to do without getting any permits or anything, it's just...
Well, I'm not aware of any other constructions in the village that are being done without, without permit. I mean, this...
Take a ride around sometimes.
Well, clearly, on, at 33 Broadway, which is the specific fencing question, you know, it's, it's, it seems the fence went up, and none of the proper procedures were followed by those who built it. And so, the village has, you know, we, it's, we've been talking with, uh, the zoning, and they're gonna go to the planning board, and, you know, they just have to go back through the process. It does take a while, but, you know, exactly.
And, you know, we live by law, so that's how the process is run.
True.
That's it. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second? That being said, they're adjourned.